Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. We've got a full quorum tonight. And Will, would you give the invocation, please?
Yes. Join me in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we come before Thy throne of grace. We ask for your blessings on this meeting, that you guide us with open hearts, open minds, and that we have the wisdom to do the right thing for our community. Bless those in need and guide and direct us in all that you do, Lord. In His name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have some, we have some communications from the audience. Mr. Goodman? Is the green light on? On the top?
Anyway, Mr. Mayor, honored city council members, honored guests, Monday morning, large willing, the creek doesn't rise, the awning should be installed Monday morning.
Awesome.
Awesome.
I'd like a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting from January the eighteenth.
I submerge mayor.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. For the mayor's report tonight, we have people from Langford that are going to be here to explain where we are with all of our grants that we're working on. I can tell you that Sir Henry and Mill Creek are in the process of being cleared right now. You can drive almost all the way from the highway to the, to the divide where, where the marsh is at the headland of the Lake Tristan. A lot of ditch work has been done on Gala Head Loop. Some of the roadwork has been done on Gala Head Loop in preparation for asphalt and as well as Camelot Circle. There's a lot going on and we're making lots and lots of progress. So without any further ado, Jessica?
There we go.
Could you please state your name and who you work for and what you're doing?
Yes, good evening. My name is Jessica DeDon. I work for Langford Community Management Services. We are the grant administrators assisting the city in their GLO, all grants actually, not just GLO. We have many. So I just came to provide just a update on everything. I, we already do a monthly with the mayor and other city staff to go over just updates, but I figured I'd come, since we were coming anyways, to get some work done. I do a presentation for everybody and just kind of give you a little update on where we're at. So every, you should have a packet in there. So the programs that you currently have right now are mostly with the General Land Office, GLO, and Texas Department of Agriculture, which is TDA. So you have about two slides for GLO because you do have quite a few general land office projects right now. The first one is your, what they're calling the competition, which is that top one. It's for the dams, Ivanhoe, Camelot, and Tristan. These are dam improvements. The city got allocated eleven point four million dollars in grant funds with a one percent match, which is that one fifteen, and it has been dedicated towards the acquisition needed for this, which we are currently working on right now. The contract date was signed in October twenty twenty-one. It expires in January twenty twenty-five. We are currently going to work on an extension request, which GLO allows one extension request up to two years. Environmental assessment, the authorities' grant funds was received for twenty-seven, twenty-three. So it is environmentally cleared. They did not find anything significant in the environmental, so everything's good. Engineering design from LJA is in process. We have, I believe, clearance on two of the dams from TCQ. We're just waiting on one, but she is, Victoria Dye from LJA has been working diligently with TCQ to get these approvals for the dams. I heard that the IPOA had passed or approved all the appraisal reports that were needed.
I was gonna jump in and say, yes, we've had the three readings and the vote. All of the properties have been approved to, to move forward with the sale. We're, I'm waiting to get the minutes of the meeting or something in writing from them to add to the, to the documentation that you're going to need.
That's great. Perfect. I've already reached out to the title company that the city had procured for this grant, and they sent me all ten appraisal reports, I think last night. I got them all back to back. So I have not opened them yet because I sent them out like six at night, but I have them all. So they're working on, we'll start coordinating closings once we get all the paperwork compiled. And we have to unfortunately do ten individual acquisition packets because they're all different parcel members. So it'll be a lot of signing, Mayor, for you and IPOA unfortunately, but we're going to get them all done so we can do it all at once in the closing all at once.
So there's one property that we, we voted on adding an additional five thousand dollars to,
Yes.
for like, for the Camelot Park. We can't act on it, but Joe McWorth suggested that we go ahead and try to add another five thousand and make that a pristine premier park for, for Ivanhoe around Lake Camelot. And though we can't work on it, I need to, I wanted to throw that out there. That's something that we'll be trying to do moving forward.
Absolutely. And I think you emailed me specifically on which parcel that was.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'll go back and look at that. GLO does allow us for negotiations, so if it's more than the appraised value, that is okay, within reason, and that would be within reason.
Yeah, well, the, the parcel or the sliver was valued at eleven hundred dollars, but the damage that it was going to do to the existing park was significant in taking away parking and.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, I'll definitely look at that and we'll adjust that report accordingly.
Okay.
So you have your dam project. It is underway. We still have some time because TCQ takes time to finish the design. And then once acquisition's complete, then we can go to bid, of course, when LJA has finished their design as well. The next project is your, they call it supplemental. That is the one that was originally a Tedom project, but it didn't get passed. So GLO kind of went over to Tedom and picked all the really good projects, and they're like, we're going to fund them.
I thought we passed, but they ran out of money.
That might have been it. That's, you're probably right, Mayor. That was not my program. But I just know GLO went and they grabbed all the ones that Tedom couldn't fund, and they're like, we'll fund them. And so that's why they called it supplemental. So we, that's how we tell between the two.
Makes sense now.
That is, of course, the streets project that Mayor was already mentioning that they're working on around town. That construction has already started. That is almost eight million dollars. That one required no match. So that was a pretty good deal that GLO offered for that one. That also expires in twenty twenty-five. I believe, I have to go back and look at the schedule, but we might be okay on time. But if not, they do allow extensions for that as well, just to finish up construction. We, Jerry and I came today to get site photos and interviews, but we got a little delayed. So I did not catch the contractors today, but we will come back tomorrow and try to catch them for onsite interviews, which is a requirement of the grant. We just checked their payrolls to make sure they're getting paid the minimum wage rates that are required because it's grant funds. And I got signed photos. That is also required. I'm doing it for this one and your other TDA, which I'll go over later on in the slides. That one is moving, the streets.
David, is that a surprise?
No, no.
Okay, I just, you had a, you had a funny look.
Oh, no. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that. We'll double check. We still got to come back anyways to get more.
Photographs?
Photographs, so I'll check and see if they're here. If not, we'll be back and we can get more interviews. The.
I think I knew that you needed to do that. I didn't associate it, the importance of it for this trip when it all came down, and I probably did not communicate it to David effectively.
Oh, that's okay. We, we had plenty to do, not just that. So this is, still, we got a lot done this trip and we have more to do.
Okay.
Your third GLO application is the MOD, which is the method of distribution. It is also mitigation, but GLO has many pots of money under mitigation. This is what you already allocated by your COG. This application has been submitted since October. Commissioner Buckingham did send out a press release in November. They're approving projects in batches. So they approved a batch for Deck Cog and Ivanhoe was on the list. So we are just waiting for a contract from GLO. But they approved the project. It is going to happen. That is also for streets. It's Ivanhoe Drive and Lakewood Drive. I, we actually got photos of that today because our environmental specialist has already started on the environmental for that one. So hopefully by the time we get contract, we'll almost have environmental clearance, and then we'll just need to wait on design to go to bid on that one. So we're a little ahead of the game before contract on that one. But that was on the move. Geologists, it takes a while with contracts, and that one is for almost two million dollars. No match required for that one either. Your fourth one, Jerry has a presentation after mine to talk more about the Resilient Communities Program, but I listed on here is a comprehensive plan for the city, is three hundred thousand dollars, also with no match. That is a brand new program for GLO. They're only doing it once. So the fact that we got Ivanhoe in is good because they probably won't have it again. That was executed also in October twenty twenty-three. Like I said, we were driving around, we're gathering data. Dennis and them have already gathered some data from Victoria from LJA. She's very helpful. We're getting windshield surveys tomorrow morning. So, and I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jerry, with the camera, we can get it uploaded into Google and it will generate on Google Maps,
Oh, wow.
the whole city. So, which will be nice because I know Ivanhoe is not mapped currently. So I don't know how long it takes Google, but they will do it if we upload it to them, so. And of course, you're having your first public meeting today, tonight afternoon, so.
What's the scope of that work? Is that roads as well or?
The comprehensive?
Mm-hmm.
That's just a plan. It's no construction involved. It's a comprehensive plan.
Oh, it's for the plan?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Yeah. So we did one a couple of years ago that was more of a canned program that didn't fit the footprint of Ivanhoe, and this is one where we'll be able to provide input and tailor it to meet more of our demands than us trying to meet some canned program.
So it's literally playing for the plan, for the comprehensive plan. That's what the grant's for?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So your TDA project is a twenty twenty-one. That is also Twenty Second Street. The other, so TDA's grant is paying for half of Twenty Second Street, and then the other half is being funded with the GLO grant for the streets. So do all Twenty Second, but two funding sources. So Texas Materials is the contractor for both, so they'll do it all at one time and get it done. We were there taking photos today. I got some signed photos, so we're good. That one is three hundred thousand, local funds fifteen. It's just like the other one. They already started construction, so they're working, they got NTP, so they're good to go. We're ready to do construction. I'll try to get site interviews for them as well while I'm here tomorrow. So we'll get both of them out of the way because they require that as well as GLO. Angela Sepuentes, I think is how you say her last name,
Yes.
runs this one from Langford. She's on it. She is our manager for the TDA program. These ones run really quickly, a lot faster than GLO. So this one will definitely be done before the GLO project. But it's underway. TDA has very strict timeframes that you have to stick to. So Angela is on it.
She can be very forceful.
Yes, she can. You wouldn't want to get on Angela's bad side. So those are all your projects. I wanted to stick in here just some funding opportunities to talk about what kind of is coming and provide a little bit more information. So the top one, the dam safety program through CCQ, the city has actually already talked to TCQ and put in for their application through FEMA for the high hazard dam. The mayor had already emailed them and said we were interested, so TCQ made Ivanhoe a part of their full application because all the funding will go through them. So if they get selected by FEMA, then this, if the city gets awarded, you'll go through TCQ for the whole project. But that was for Charmaine and Lake Tristan, I believe, for repairs. And they said they are potentially eligible for this program. TCQ's a little different, but we do anticipate from what they told us in July, I believe, she said that they should hopefully hear from FEMA on who they're going to fund. So that is a potential that could be coming down later on. But I just want to stick that on here so you're aware that that is happening. Hopefully we get it. Fingers crossed.
Any idea when we might know something on that one?
I'm sorry?
Any idea when they're going to award that?
FEMA has said they were going to try to attempt in July to let TCQ know. So hopefully. Your TDA has rounds, application rounds every two years. So the twenty twenty-five application round, I just put this on here because TDA is implementing a new process where they do like kind of a pre-app. So you'll just submit very minimal information to them, and then they'll tell you if you're going to be funded or not. And if they say you have a good chance of getting funded, they'll ask you to submit a full application. So I put on, in on here because it is happening. I don't believe the city at Ivanhoe will get funded because you've already been funded so many rounds over the past six years, and that reduces your points everywhere else.
That's what happened with Twenty Eighth Street. We actually came in number nine or ten in points, but because of previous funding, we came in twenty out of twenty.
Yes. Yeah, so because.
And they funded through about thirteen.
Yeah, Deck Cog, they don't have a whole lot of funding through TDA, so Ivanhoe falls in the list. So even if you were to apply the next round, you'll gain twenty more points. But if all the same people, a number amount of people applied, you're going to get closer, but you're still not going to be within the amount they funded this round. So we can, you could still.
But it's important to submit an application so we get those points.
It is, yeah. And so you can keep submitting the same application. You already have a survey for that project. Surveys are good for five years. So they might not fund it next round, but it might be funded in twenty twenty-seven, you know, for that. So we'll just keep doing it. I put it on here, but I wanted to just disclose there's not a high chance you'll get funded, but we, you could still submit for a pre-app if you would like.
So is that cycle three or four years? That sounds like about a three or four year cycle. Once you've been in the funding cycle and you get it, it's probably another three years or so before you get back in that cycle?
Yes, sir. They, it's every two years they do an application round. So you have a project for twenty twenty-one, but I think you had one for like two or three years before that. And I think TDA uses a six-year range of funding, like three or four rounds. And then every time, if you have two out of four, it just reduces your points. You had high points in everything else except for that, and that's what knocked you down. But everything else was good. It was a good project. You just lost that because you guys got funded too many times, according to TDA.
Yeah.
So we'll definitely try again. You'll get funded again. The other one I want to put up here because it had been, I heard in passing about the FAST grant, which is the Fire, Ambulance, and Service Truck Grant. It is also through TDA. They usually open up around July in previous years, but we have not seen it open. This is, we get a fire truck, but the big, I noticed, so they only fund people who have a fire truck that's twenty-five years or older. If you don't have that, you lose a lot of points, and then the chances of getting funded are slim to none. So if you have a fire truck that is twenty-five plus years old, you gain enough points, you have a good chance of getting funded for that. It is a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, but the match is very minimal. It's only seventy-five hundred. It's not a percent. So I can definitely reach out to the mayor once that opens up, or Angela will. And if you guys are interested in applying, that is there as well.
Would it work with an emergency management district, volunteer fire departments?
That's a good question. I could ask. It's not my program, so I don't know that, but I could definitely, that's a good question. I will ask, and so once it's released, Angela will reach out to you and see if you're interested.
Always interested.
Yes. It's a very small match. It's not a percentage, so it's a, it's a good deal. So that is all the updates that we have, you have going with Langford, GLO and TDA, any upcoming? Do you have any questions about any of those?
No, I just would like to say that your update is far better than any one that I've ever given. And I thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Jerry?
Let me switch out ears. I don't know how it works though. Let's see if I can get it. I can't see very good here. Let's see. We need to get you out. That's Jessica's. Oh, there it is. Slideshow.
Yay, okay, we did it. Hello, Ivanhoe.
Hello.
This is my first trip, and so I was very delightfully surprised at such a quaint, wonderful little town. We look forward to working with you all to put together your comprehensive plan. As Jessica mentioned, this is a grant for three hundred thousand. It's a new program with GLO, and Ivanhoe was in the queue for the, one of the first to be funded. So we're very excited that we were able to get the full three hundred thousand to build a truly robust, digitized plan that's not just a PDF you sit on the shelf and someday you look at it. It's something that we want to work with you to put together this great plan for the community, and that's what we'll be doing over the next two years. So I know you all had mentioned in our kickoff meeting that you have quite a few people from the community who are interested in participating. And are any of those people here tonight, Skip?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to highlight any of them? Say.
David Marshall is here.
Hi, David.
Our chief of police is back there.
Hello.
And then several of the councilmen.
Okay. And as we move into the actual nitty gritty of the planning and setting up the meetings, if, if you identify any other community members that want to participate, we can certainly do that. Today, we'll talk more about the grant timeline. Dennis is here with me, and he'll be talking about the data collection, a little bit more about what's going on behind the scenes and how we'll be utilizing that data. We'll talk about the community engagement portal. I've pre-developed a lot of press releases, social media posts, things like that, that we can gather feedback from the community, even if they're not participating in the planning. But we still want to get as much feedback as possible, and then additional chapter options. This is the team from Langford. I'm sure a lot of you know Judy. She's been in business for many years and is just, I call her the grant queen. She participates not, she participates in every project with Langford, so she's very involved. She does give it to us to take and do the community outreach and so forth, but she's always there to answer questions. I'm Jerry Conrato, as I mentioned, and I'll be your community engagement liaison, working closely with not only the key stakeholders, but the community at large to gather and collect data. Dennis here with me is the senior engineer, Dennis Koo, and he will give you just a little bit about what he's doing in a few minutes. We have a new team member, Tim Jenkins, who is a senior planner and will be helping us just consolidate, compile all the data as we collect it. Helen Willard is a GIS specialist and is working on the GIS mapping, which is a really exciting piece of the program.
What is GIS?
Graphical Information System.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll show you what it looks like in just a minute, so you'll have a very good visual of it. And Kevin Coleman, he, community relations, he works in the north part of the state, but he's part of the team as well. The grant was part of a hundred million dollar Biden-Harris infrastructure grant. It won't last forever, but it will last until the money runs out. So we were the first to apply with some cities like Ivanhoe, and we were able to justify the full three hundred thousand because no matter the size of the community, even smaller communities require really more planning because you don't have a lot of stuff to build on and do minor updates. So we were able to justify that. The deliverables are really looking at resiliency. That is what the focus of this comprehensive plan needs to be. So we're looking at hazards and risk assessments and mitigation, population studies with twenty-year projections, housing studies, land use, capital improvement plan, optional chapters, which I'll tell you about in just a few slides later, and then the zoning ordinance, which Dennis will mention that too as we get to that part. So the timeline is two years. We hope and we expect that we can accelerate that quite a bit. The first contract execution was in October, and then we had the holidays, and then we had, so now we're into month four, and we have already been collecting the GIS, drafting the goals and the base studies, and this is counted as your first public meeting. There are three public meetings required, but we would like to do more, even if it's virtual, just to update the community and keep in touch. The earlier meetings, we're going to say maybe two-hour meetings every other month, maybe attached to your Saturday planning meeting at the first of the month or something like that. And then as we get into the later months for plan revisions, not quite as necessary to meet so frequently, but we do want you all involved and part of the team to plan. And then the, the goal is to get everything finalized and approved by December of twenty twenty-five, which we think will be no problem at all. I'm not going to go into these exactly detail of each one, but I wanted you to see that there's a lot going on behind the scenes. Each of these milestones are required to be met and ordered task before we can move to the next level. GLO is very particular about the details. They want to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing, we're collecting the data, we're utilizing, which I understand it's not always the fun part, but I appreciate your help, Haley and Skip, to help me pull all this together, because they want to see everything that we're doing, and each of these milestones have to be met before we move to the next level. I'm going to let Dennis take it from here and tell you more about what he's doing on the data collection side.
Mayor, Council, my name's Dennis Koo. I'm handling the, I'll be overseeing and handling the engineering-related tasks and the data collection for the geographical information system. And essentially, what we're hoping that this, with this comprehensive plan, and, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, sure.
With this comprehensive plan, we will produce more than just, as Judy was, or as Jerry was saying, a paper report or a PDF report that just sits in someone's file, but will actually create a planning tool for your public works and even the city to use as a planning.
Be a living electronic document?
Correct. And so essentially what the GEO, GIS, Geographical Information System is, is a map that has a database attached to it. And so you're able to like click on a feature and see basic information. So my job on the data collection side is to gather the inventory of assets and then document like what's, like if it's a pipe system or if it's, you know, the structure-
Map it all out.
Map it all out, where is it located in a geo-referenced format? So if you put it in Google Maps, it would show up in the right spot, right? And basically document the condition, the, you know, the different attributes, the size, and then date of installation. That's the base that we would give and then hand off to David. And then he would have that to be able to manage the assets or whoever's handling that can manage that going forward, and they would just update that information as work happens in the city. We've collected the information from LJA. Victoria was kind enough to send over the files for y'all's projects, and we brought those in, and they were perfectly geo-referenced, so they fell right in where they were supposed to with the parcels. And so we've created those from, and then we'll convert those over to the format that the geographical information system can use. So we've got that done. We met with David, he was the mayor, and Wilt this afternoon. They were kind enough to spend, you know, they're really busy, spent a couple, you know, an hour and a half or so talking to us about the various needs of the city. And that was another part of our task is to identify, identify the needs for projects that will go into the capital improvement plan. And then we spent the rest of the afternoon kind of just driving around and putting our eyes on, you know, the dams and then some of the work. We saw all the work that's going on and just the general condition of the culverts and ditches and those sort of things. The city really only owns the sewer, or I'm sorry, the storm sewer and the drainage and the roads. But we'll be reaching out to Southwest Water Corporation or Texas Utilities to see if we can get information on the water. And then we do understand that everyone's on septic here. We, if one of the possibilities of doing for the sewer, we might be able to do just kind of a high-level analysis of what would it take to have centralized sewer. I will warn you, it will be quite high, just because, you know, it's expensive to do, but at least you would have an idea, right? Like this is-
How many hundreds of millions of dollars it would be?
Yeah, we won't have design level information, but it'll be a thumb and kind of like, well, you know, it'd be about like, you know, ballpark estimate of what that would cost. At least you have, know what you're shooting for if you decide to do it. So that's in essence what my part of the plan will be.
Is that just underground, or does that do utilities overhead as well?
Since you don't own the electrical lines, we will not, we'll assess them a little bit, right? But we won't be mapping those. Right? Because you don't own those, and it's not a city-owned utility. We will, you know, kind of probably assess some for, since this is a mitigation, you know, we may assess a little bit about how risk, how much risk there is. You know, you've got a lot of trees. Big tall trees around power lines, you know, and, but other than that, we won't be mapping those.
Dennis, the next slide shows that GIS, GIS layers. Anyone to show them that? Just push that button, you got it, almost there. There you go.
Okay, so that's just, this is a conceptual depiction of what's, how you, how you would basically use geographical information systems. You know, you've got various, basically have different layers, and you can overlay all the layers to look at your streets and then your floodplain and your, you know, whatever it is, right? If you have a zoning, if you have, you know, just various features, you can actually overlay everything and start to make analysis, right? Like, hey, this is, this is, this is a risk, you know, these areas, these houses are in the floodplain, this is where our risk is. It helps plan for response, emergency responses, you know, all kinds of things. So that's, yes, sir.
Is there a layer or a feature you click on a particular site that could show the elevation of a particular site that you-
Sure, well, we will bring in topographical contours. Like you'll at least have that. You won't be able to maybe get the exact elevation, but you'll be able to see, you know, which, the lay of the land essentially. You can look at the contours coming, you know, coming down. You'll be able to see your streams, you know, drainage. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Dennis.
That's all?
Just a few more?
So what'd you do the rest of your afternoon?
A few more things. It's a lot of information, a lot of data coming together, but the end result will be a very valuable tool that we will train you on how to use it so that you are able to look ahead, plan for the future. As I mentioned earlier, we would like to do some little bit longer planning meetings for the first six, seven months, and we can set that time as we need it. And then quarterly meetings as we move further into the plan, that would just be reviews. In the kickoff meeting, you did identify surveys, emails, you liked the newspaper announcements, public relations activities, and social media. So what we're doing is a community engagement marketing portal. So we've got a press release already prepared for you. As we move through, we'll update these press releases with the town halls or the community meetings. We have social media posts that you can make announcements, you can give status. Of course, we'll have a web link that can show at any time what's going on as we move just a little bit further into the program. But we want to make this easy and not have to stop and recreate every time we want to make an announcement or keep the public engaged and get their feedback. Some possible optional chapters. With the budget, we feel like we'll have enough to do some extra things for the community that you want and need to do. And we can look at this closer as we get into the planning, because this will be added in, but some of the communities are very excited about water resources and water conservation studies as is most important in most Texas cities. Some communities are more interested in parks and recreation for the trails and things like that. It, a lot of communities are interested in economic assessment and development, downtown revitalization projects. Some are looking at more master drainage plans and things like that, but you can't do a full, if you've already got a big comprehensive plan, it's easier to add a segment like that, but some of these, we'll just have to see what's possible. Decision support dashboards. I found an app called Savvy Citizen, and it's a community mobile app. Have you heard of that before?
No, ma'am.
It's amazing. The police department, the public works, someone has to be administrator, but it makes announcements to the community if there's-
What's it called again?
Savvy Citizen.
You, you, familiar with it?
If it's, it's a complimentary free app. I'll show you where to find it. But we had talked about in the early stages that we would develop an app if you wanted one, but this is, it's truly free. The city has to log in, and then the community starts to get announcements from it on a mobile app, so they can report, you know, there's a pothole on that street that we have a problem with, or things like that. And it's like, oh, no. Okay, well, maybe you don't, but we can get it as we move in.
Carolyn, that's right up your alley.
Yes, sir, it sounds like it.
It's, it's a wonderful tool. A lot of the smaller communities I'm seeing are starting to use it, and it grows organically as your community starts to get used to it and they start reporting things, and we can put survey links and things like that, so we can look at-
So we could put that on our webpage too, and people could download the, download the app from the webpage.
Yes.
Could that be used for an emergency action plan?
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yes. Like I said, the police department, anybody that is in your community run, from the admin side, can make announcements, updates, meetings, whatever. And then from the, the community side, people sign in and get the app on their phone, and they'll get these announcements, or they can report things or take a survey or whatever. So it's a very exciting little tool. Structure inventory, some of this will come along with it, and some of it, some communities are more interested in that. Grant opportunities report with you all in Ivanhoe, Langford is very involved, and a lot of grants are already in the works, and we keep you posted and updated. A community that doesn't have as many grants would be very excited about grant opportunities. So know that we'll keep you posted. And that can be built into the capital improvement plans, as Dennis mentioned. So this is Savvy Citizen. It's absolutely complimentary. Once you decide to do it, if you do, the government side is the city, and that's the administration, and then we can announce through our public engagement for community to get the app on their phone.
Pretty cool. No? So other organizations could use it within the city, or, you know, the other groups that-
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
It's got a little free tutorial, and it's just, and I think Kennedy, Texas, is one that's already using it and pretty active. Several of them are, I didn't research how many people are already using it, but the feedback looked very good on that, and it's free, so it's just a free tool for the community. So any questions, comments, concerns?
Can people beat you up on that app?
Our job is to make everybody's job easier.
By chance, would it be possible to email that slide over to council for us to refer back to?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Excellent.
Great, well, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure meeting you all in person, and I'll look forward to working with you. I will coordinate the next planning meeting, and we'll get everything kicked off soon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Are you done with the computer?
Are you going to turn it down? Okay, there we go.
The light was bright. I'm seeing stars. Chief? So I'm going to bring item 10 up to, for you tonight, too.
Oh, I didn't see that.
Mayor, council?
There we go. All right, Mayor and Council, first off, it's a pleasure to be back in front of the council before, it's been a while.
Welcome home.
Thank you. All right, so for the month of January, we had 52 calls for service. Five of those calls were agency assist, assistant fire department, sheriff's office, things like that. We had two arrests, both of them felony arrests. We had 44 traffic stops. We had 29 warnings and 18 citations of that. We are getting our code enforcement going. Officer Baker has been, he has gone to the code enforcement training and is qualified and will be working code enforcement as well as patrol.
So did he pass his test?
He does not, actually, according to state regulations, as a peace officer, he does not require to take a test.
So he's good to go?
He is good to go.
All right, so he's full on board?
He is full on board. Yes. January was a rainy month. That's why it looks like some of our traffic stop numbers may be low. Please remember that with heavy rains, even going into February, into February and into March, heavy rains can have a decreased visibility. Just be careful when you're out there in the streets. And remember, Ivanhoe has a five-dog limit. Make sure your animals are spayed, neutered, help control the pet population. Thank you.
All right, now then, I'm going to move number 10 up to number three here. Consider for discussion, action, changing the speed limit on Camelot. Since it's been paved, it's difficult to go 35 miles an hour on that street. I can take my foot off the accelerator and coast, and it'll be 40 miles an hour. I've spoken to the, all of the police officers. They think that 40 miles an hour on a Camelot is a safe speed, both directions, but until you get, when you're coming this direction towards the dam, it needs to be a 30 mile an hour step down at Mayberry, then you get to the 20 mile here. I leave it in your hands as to whether anybody here, whether y'all would agree with this or not. Chief, do you have anything to add to it?
I don't. We've actually driven it multiple times. Coming from the four-way intersection to Mayberry is actually very easy to find yourselves doing 40.
There's no cross-streets, it's just-
Just the side street, that's it. Off to your, off to your west side. And so 40 is a reasonable speed on that, no threats at any point on that side. I would support the recommendation on that aspect from a, from a safety standpoint.
So I'm trying to figure out what the specific motion would be.
To, to increase the speed from 30 to 40 miles an hour on Camelot. Pardon? Yeah, it's from the stop sign at Ivanhoe Drive, going this way to Mayberry, and then with a step down to 30, and then you turn the corner, and there's a 20 mile an hour speed limit going across the bridge, that would not change. Then going the other direction, it would be 40 from the, the dam to Ivanhoe Drive.
Trying to get cross-streets to make a proper motion. Do we need to have a specific, we're not, okay. I make a motion that we accept the recommendation from the police officer for the speed zone on Camelot Drive and-
It's his recommendation. I'm just putting in my two cents on it.
Well, yeah, I had to make a motion.
I have a question. Are there any state requirements on residential areas and speeds, or how does that count on that specific street? Because I know with housing and streets, there's supposed to be a certain speed limit.
Side streets remain, remain unchanged.
So that's a side street?
Side streets are unchanged. This is a major thoroughfare, and it's, it's, it's hard to do 40 miles an hour or less. I have, you have to ride your brakes the whole time.
I was trying to get into discussion.
You, you want a discussion?
Well, I mean, I just thought, man, if we're trying to make a motion, we get it into a motion, and we could get it, we could have this formal discussion.
Absolutely. I know you have something to say.
I am teed up.
Yes, sir.
Having, I'm going to go there again, having grown up here and utilized that particular street extensively in my youth, and having my kids utilize it extensively, and watching particularly the summer utilization of that thoroughfare. We have lots of bikes, lots of golf carts, lots of folks' kids. It really does seem, as much as it is functionally a primary thoroughfare for the city, it's also that for our youth and for people using it recreationally, coming up and down, I know that it may be a bit of an inconvenience and may take some additional attention to keep it under wraps, you know, keep it under, you know, to 30. My, my personal sense is, is that as much traffic as we have with, with youth and with people up here on the weekends, particularly during the summer months and when it's nice out, I think that we run an increased risk of, of safety hazards, especially in those months if we increase the speed.
Noted.
So currently at 30 or 35?
30. I have to agree with Councilman Harrington on that one.
The other, the other thing about that particular stretch of road is you have both a blind curve and a blind hilltop, so-
So if there are kids out and somebody's, you know, swerving to miss whoever, you know, whether it's kids or a golf cart or whatever, there are multiple blind points on that, that roadway that, you know, people could be deviating to allow for pedestrians that are, don't necessarily belong in the roadway, but we know it's gonna happen. So, um, that would reduce reaction time for a driver to be able to avoid a collision, or, uh, whether it be with another vehicle or a pedestrian.
And once, and once you go to forty, they'll be doing forty-five.
That's why we're there.
Any further discussion?
I, I know I've, uh, almost been hit head-on a number of times coming both ways, both in the, the twenty mile an hours zone and the thirty mile an hour zone. And I'm in my own lane, uh, and, and going back to what Councilman Harrington, uh, said, the points that he makes, I, I, I have to agree with that as well. Uh, my personal opinion is, is, you know, we leave it as it is, because if, if we give them forty miles an hour, they're gonna go fifty. You know, as it is right now, it's thirty. They're going forty. You give them forty, they're going fifty. Uh, you know, anything from golf carts to, to pedestrians to cyclists, uh, the little puppy dog that ran out of the yard, you name it. I, my personal take on it is we should just leave it as it is.
Okay. I guess we move on to the next item. Thank you, sir. Uh, court activity, we had, uh, we collected forty-two hundred and thirty-three dollars last month. We're averaging anywhere from thirty-five to forty-two hundred, forty-three hundred dollars a month in, in collections. David? Green light. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all? Good. Uh, I, I must apologize. Uh, we, we've had a, a whirlwind week, and, uh, a very busy breakdown kind of afternoon, so I'm not as prepared as I, I normally would be. However, it, uh, nice to report that we are still ahead of the contractors as far as the culverts and the work that we promised to do, uh, to save money on some of these contracts. Uh, we're still ahead of the game. On their behalf, I would like to, to thank them, uh, for getting their communication better in order with, uh, with my office, and, uh, we, we really work a whole lot smoother that way and, and better. Uh, that's, that's definitely a plus. I know we've had some issues with the traffic control at this point, to this date. Uh, they have made quite a few changes, upgraded things, and I think we'll be okay. We're just gonna, again, have to continue to communicate. Uh, that part of it is, is moving along well. Uh, I don't anticipate any issues of not being able to, to stay in front of them, so they can keep the pace that they need to keep. As far as our routine maintenance, we're still able to work that in, take care of the work orders as they come in. We're now out, uh, two weeks ahead on scheduling, but, uh, we, we do notify the customers and let them know approximately sometime between Thursday, or excuse me, Tuesday and Friday of this week. Uh, give them a date, and so forth. It seems to be working really well. We're gonna try to continue to, to be able to do that. Other than that, it, it's just, it's just a busy time. Uh, we're, we're getting our material like we should. Uh, we're getting our material on time. Our main guy that did that for us has moved on to greener pastures, but, uh, I think his name is Larry Martin, has stepped in and is doing, doing a jam-up job for us at Texas Materials, getting this stuff to us on time. So we're going good in that aspect. Uh, we're getting more and more comfortable with the ideas of not having to go in and completely rehab some of these roads. Uh, you, you made mention of it, Skip, that we're, we're, we're able to go out and just perform routine maintenance instead of spending ten thousand dollars on fixing the holes and the ruts and everything else. We're being able to, to keep on top of them, and I anticipate that to only get better as time goes on. Besides that, that's, uh, that's about what I've got right now. Any questions?
Moving on to dams.
Okay, on the dams. Uh, we have a tentative date of next Wednesday. I don't recall the date, but it's next Wednesday.
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first. I knew that was in there somewhere. Uh, to install the new valve on the, uh, on the dam. Weather permitting, which it should, it looks like a good day. I understand we're gonna have the, the, the good fortune of having Scuba Dave out there with us, and, uh, tell us where to, to put, what we need to put to, to block everything off. Is, can I count on you on that? Outstanding. Yeah, I hope you've got a good wetsuit. Okay, we're a little bit longer. We'll just have it down. You can walk out there. Other than that, the monthly dam reports are status quo, uh, pretty much the same thing. Everything's looking good.
The, the soundings?
The soundings are coming up, uh, Monday, if I'm not mistaken. That's just an intro to, to run the, to get the measurements of the voids, or are they actually gonna begin work?
That's the depth and the width of the void, so we know, so we can go back to the engineers and see how to properly fill them.
Okay.
And, and we get a better bid on the cost of it.
Okay.
These dams were, the previous administration didn't do their due diligence in, in taking care of them and not doing what has been anticipated. There's twenty-eight voids on Charmaine alone that we're looking at. And their engineers have said, have stated that we need to get the lake as low as the soil has not come out underneath that dam anymore. So that's why we're maintaining that dam, that lake level where it is now, to protect that dam, so we don't lose that dam. I asked the question, is it possible for that dam to breach? We don't know. Our recommendation is to lower the lake till you don't see soil coming up from underneath it. And then, once we get this information, then we can go forward and make the right decisions to repair these dams. We have a committee or a team that we discuss, is Skip, David, and myself. And when we decide we're gonna open a valve or close a valve, we three meet and make that decision and come to agreement on it. So our position is, right now, the valve is halfway open. And we're gonna maintain the level where it is right now, till we get through the, the truce, the ground truthing. Once we get that completed, we get that information, and we can go forward and prioritize what we need to fix first. So hopefully, we'll have that within the next two weeks. Did I leave anything out, David?
No, you've given the dam report perfectly.
Sorry about that.
We've, we've gotten contradicting, uh, statements from the engineers, the same engineers with regard to the dam. One says it's, they don't know if it'll go. The other says there's absolutely no danger. We know the area of the da, of the, or the size of the, the void from the ground penetrating radar. What, what, like he said, we don't know the volume or the size of the hole.
I'm still going the long way home tonight. No, I, I, I think, I think we're good to go. So Monday is basically gonna, gonna start the whole process, other than getting back with the engineers, finding the foam or the grout or whatever. Okay, okay, okay. Uh, sounds good.
One quick question, one quick question, David. With the uncertainty, if you will, here, uh, is that a, uh, call for additional monitoring for the load zone, uh, with the heavy trucks and trailers coming in and out for the construction?
We do, and I get a lot of questions on that. Uh, I try to bring, at this point in time, everything across Tristan, which is an earthen dam with no weight limit. Uh, Galahad is, is, is strong, good. Uh, we try and bring them in that way. I know the contractors have contacted me several times. Can you bring this in? Can we bring this in? No, you have to bring them separately, not together. So we're, we're working with them on that, and, and, yeah, we're definitely keeping an eye on that. I don't think there's imminent danger of anything happening, but, again, like Skip said, we're getting different.
Yeah.
Different thoughts on that.
And we're being proactive with it right now.
Sure, true, true. I'd rather be safe than sorry.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, we, we are taking care of that. Good question, and thank you. Ms. Williams?
I have no questions for him. Are we on the zoning?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm gonna sit down.
Apologies, apologies, sir.
Are you done with David?
Any further questions, Your Honor?
Apologies.
I thought it was well done. Thank you. As far as planning and zoning, uh, they did some reruns. We're looking at it again next time, and then we'll should have something for council.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's come to my attention that, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission is supposed to appoint the chairman, vice chairman, and secretary annually. And, uh, we have not been doing that, so, uh, I'd, I'd need a motion to appoint that, uh, to leave the individuals as they are. Uh, chairman is Lloyd Seams, vice chairman is Carla. I can't think of her. Huh? McCullough, and, uh, Secretary Valerie Weber, for now. But can I get a motion to appoint them?
I'll make that motion, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Brother Gregory?
Uh, Mayor, City Council, there was, uh, no meeting of the Tyler County Appraisal District this go-round, so there is nothing to report there. I'll come back to you next month after we have our meeting. And I'm just going to go ahead and slide on into, uh, agenda number nine, consider for discussion, grants for general police department equipment. Um, I've come across a company who hires, um, grant writers and such to reach out to, uh, small entities like ourselves, like the city of Ivanhoe, uh, with small police departments. And, uh, as it stands right now, the, the company is RTS Tactical. Uh, and they have hired a company called Grant Funds and Public Safety Grants. Pretty generic names, but they have a long reputation of success. They work with private, um, entities, uh, foundations, nonprofit organizations, uh, to ensure that police departments have the gear that they need to do the job that they need to do. And as such, uh, it has come to my attention that there is a rather sizable pool of funds amongst these entities. And what I'm asking for is, um, I'm asking for council's approval to continue or to initiate more serious dialogue with these grant-writing companies. Uh, the overall vision, the way it works is, uh, since it is a, since we're dealing with private funding entities, there's no city match. We're, we're looking at free money. Uh, and the grants would be written up and distributed, let's say, just theoretically, hypothetically, the city says, okay, we have a twenty thousand dollar goal, if you will. So this company, or these companies, basically walk us through the process. They hold our hands, help us fill in the blanks, uh, make sure that the paperwork is in order before we submit any of these grants to these entities, or grant requests to these entities. And there is a chance, uh, that we could actually overfund, uh, if we, going back to the, the example of twenty thousand, uh, that one grant would be broadcast to a number of entities. Uh, and one entity could come back and say, yes, we'll fund the whole thing, or a partial. Uh, or we could get five of these entities coming back, saying, yes, we'll fund the whole thing, so we could potentially wind up with more than we requested. And again, it's no match, no cost. So, any, any questions that I could answer before we put a formal motion on the floor?
What, what exactly is it that you're wanting from us, or wanting?
Uh, I'm asking for council's approval to initiate a more formal dialogue with the companies to actually put together a project, a funding project, to get funds for our police department.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
Okay, this is, this is the agreement with, uh, Southwest Water Corporation. This has been months in the making. We had the, uh, the, uh, ordinance amended that if TCEQ is unable to get anyone to come into compliance with their septic system, that after fair, uh, warning and, and notice, and going through a process of giving them every opportunity to make the necessary corrections to come in line with TCEQ expectations, we can have Southwest Water Corporation shut their water off. Uh, it's not something that we are wanting to do or relish doing, but we, we cannot afford to allow people to, to, uh, not handle their wastewater properly. So this is a contract. It's a mutual agreement between the city of Ivanhoe and Southwest Water Corporation. We, uh, have run this past our attorney. That's been worded to be, uh, should I read this? This provides Texas Water Corporation, uh, the ability to, to legally shut the water off. Their concern was that if they shut someone's water off and they say, I've been paying my bill on, on time, all this time, so why are you shutting my water off? Well, it's, it's a legal matter now between the city and, uh, uh, the individual. So, we now have this contract here. If you, you should have already seen it, uh, if you had a chance to look at it. What I need now is a motion to, to, to accept this and, and move forward with it.
Aye, so move.
A second.
Any discussion?
So this basically is consistent with what we approved as far as the, um, the zoning, the, the, we had a discussion and approved the actual, um, law, the city, the city ordinance for this two months ago. So this is just consistent with that in a contract form for Texas Water to execute it. They have to basically execute our ordinance.
That's correct.
So this is.
So I didn't.
Assistant with that.
Yes, I thought that, since we already had passed the ordinance, that this need not be presented again. But, uh, Sean and, and Kate said that I should present it as a final document to council for review. Uh, it's, it's basically just outlining what the ordinance is in place, and it sets out a mutual agreement between the two.
Yeah, it looked like the ordinance in a, in a contract form, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Who's gonna oversee this?
Do you have any, anything to add to that?
No, I think you did a pretty stand-up job.
So who oversees it?
Uh, we will. The city will, uh, in conjunction with TCEQ.
Yeah, when y'all find someone not in, uh.
In compliance.
In compliance with, it becomes a health and safety issue, so.
Yes, sir.
Do we actually have people checking for compliance?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, he's, uh, he's, um, incognito most of the time. Mr. Joe Sheets is our designated representative from, uh, Texas, uh, Commission of Environmental Quality. And, uh, he has the legal right to walk onto your property and look at your septic system and make sure that it's hooked up properly and, and functioning properly.
Yeah, I think it's very important for these lakes.
Yes, sir. Not just the lakes, but, you know, being a neighbor, too. Yes, sir.
Just for your information, um, our inspector sheets.
Yes, sir.
Have been out and talked to him three times now, about a specific house that he's trying to get them to comply. He's written several letters, several phone calls, and never got an answer on it. So I think that's one of the reasons this type of thing is in place.
So what will happen now is that we will, we will begin the, the process of documenting the fact that he has made multiple attempts to get these people to comply with and bring their septic system.
that he has made multiple attempts to get these people to comply with and bring their septic system or their... gray water has to be treated legally as black water, so it all has to be treated the same way. And if they're not going to respond or make the necessary corrections, then our only recourse is to have their water turned off. Yes, sir. So if they don't have water, they can't operate a septic system.
Some people are pretty stubborn around here.
That's true.
All the more reason to have this.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion?
We have a motion. Second, we already finished discussion.
Okay. All in favor? Yes, ma'am?
The fifty-dollar fee that we'll be charging them, is there any way for the city to get that back? And they have to pay the reconnection fee? Say, we shut their water off, the city pays the fifty dollars. Do we charge Section Two, Part Two?
Yeah, I see it.
I don't imagine we'll have to be doing this too terribly often, but...
Well, I know of two right now that are needed and possibly a third after, you know, talking to Mr. Stonelund.
So we'll be doing that, do we pass on that fee to the...
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, there's no, no free rides. We can't absorb their, their money for their mistakes.
I think we have something in the ordinance. I'm trying to remember the ordinance. I can't remember.
I should have printed it out.
I can't remember it.
I should have printed it out.
I would think that would fall under the ordinance though and not under the...
It's under the ordinance, yeah. It's not under this.
It wouldn't be in part of the contract.
Yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right.
If it's not in the ordinance, I think we'd have to go back and address the ordinance to do that. But this is, TW is gonna charge us.
Would you double-check that for us, Ms. Williams?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all. Ms. Williams?
That's still confusing.
Okay. The financial documents, including the bank and the tax class statements, were sent to council on February 5th. The accountant financial reports and reconciliation details for each account were emailed to council as soon as they arrived. I believe those went out on the 6th. The other items to report for the month. The state comptroller direct deposited nine thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars on February 9th for sales and use taxes that were collected in December and reported to the comptroller in January. Last year, the same month was eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. The January ad valorem taxes were received February 7th totaling three hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, with three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven going to maintenance and operations and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and ten for the interest and sinking fund. The calculate... I can hear it.
Me too.
The calculated balance of delinquent taxes stands at five thousand three hundred and one as of January 31st, which is the aggregate amount from 2010 to present. Put that under twice. Calculated balance of unpaid taxes, penalties and interest for Ivanhoe North has remained at five thousand three hundred and one dollars. I just worded it different. Pledge securities at Citizen State Bank totaled one hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and five dollars above the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC insurance, giving the city a cushion of three hundred and seventy-two thousand, ninety-eight dollars above our deposits. Our tax class interest rate has remained in the 5.2% range through the month. That being said, the accountant monthly report for January arrived February 12th and was sent out on February 14th. The totals for the various department budgets are correct after there was some back and forth, but the bank statements have been reconciled and I believe that the January financials can be approved.
Need a motion to approve the financials? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the January financials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you for catching that issue back in, I saw that last time.
So, uh, you ready to go home? Motion due adjourned?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Drive careful.
Appreciate it. Y'all have a good one.
So I'll, I'll get two copies off.